Welcome, everyone, to the Aspen City Council Work Session of January 26. Where did the month go? And thank you for all that --
Can you raise your mic?
Oh, we got them all going. Again. Again, we're at the Aspen City Council Work Session on January 26. So, thank you all for attending. Before we go to the Board interviews, I would like to ask my council members, did anyone have any comments on the information memo in our packets that they'd like to discuss? We have our utilities team with us. If you weren't prepared for that and want to discuss that info memo at another time, we'll let them go now and come back, but otherwise, it was just an update.
Yeah, good work on the microgrids.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we had to find out, huh? So, no questions or comments for you guys today, it appears. Thank you so much for being here to help us out, though. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Microgrids.
So, now, we will go on to our Board interviews and then discussion of all the interviews we already did. Linda Manning is able to get here today and was unable last time, and we had some communication issues, which I apologize for on behalf of the city. But let's go ahead and get started and tell us a little about why you're applying for this position, Linda, and then I'll have people asking you questions.
Hi, thank you. You guys have seen me a lot for Board interviews last year. I am interested in APSHA. I think what the Board does, you know, housing is such a big part of this community and the amount of units that APSHA is responsible for is it's a big part of the community as far as, you know, dollar amount and just for the number of folks who live in it. Over the summer, I participated in the strategic plan open houses for the update of the strategic plan. I follow along with the meetings and it just, I think there's a lot of interesting issues coming up in housing that the Board could tackle. Retirement in the unit being one of them. I watched the interviews that I wasn't able to attend, and I know that that was a big question. And the research that I've been able to do just over the weekend, you know, there's not a lot of data on who's in APSHA units as far as ownership and rental. And what I could find was from 2001, when HomeTrek was first instituted. And at that time, 58% of the folks living in APSHA were 50 years of age or older. So, I mean, it, there is a significant amount of people who are getting towards that retirement age. So, it's a good opportunity to talk about what are we going to do, you know, and capital reserves and repair, you know. Rental units are great, you know, because it just, you go in, you pay your rent, you qualify every year, and someone else is replacing the roof and the water heater. So, you know, it was great from my perspective to see that the lumberyard is all rental units and not ownership, just from a capital reserve standpoint. You know, I think there are some creative things that could happen with deed restrictions going forward. You know, from my personal experience, it seems like renters are treated almost as, you know, second-class citizens compared to the people who own. You know, heaven forbid you get a pay increase if you're in a rental unit because it could bump you to a different category. So, I mean, I think there are things with categories that could be explored so people don't feel threatened as far as, you know, their housing on the rental and ownership side.
Thank you. Phil?
Hi, Linda.
Hi, Phil.
First, a statement is, in my opinion, I think Linda deserves serious recognition and commendation for your persistence in trying to serve our community. I've never seen a name appear so often on the interview list for boards and commissions, and it's clear to me that you really genuinely want to serve our community, and I appreciate that so much.
Well, thank you. And, I mean, I was appointed to the Board of Adjustment, which oddly enough is the only board I didn't interview for, and we've met once since then. So, I mean, I want to be involved, and, you know, this opportunity came up, so here I am.
Great. I was hoping to ask you, I am going to ask you, could you share how your experience in your professional roles in real estate, particularly in the Aspen market, do you think would be an asset for you in your potential role on the APSHA Board?
Well, I just, you know, from a development standpoint, you know, I understand housing from, you know, being a renter to the development side. You know, we have developed and are in the process of permitting 22 units and 46 bedrooms. And then we've got another 28 units and 54 bedrooms on the horizon. You know, that's in the pipeline for us to develop. So, you know, I understand the building aspect, you know. All in our hard and soft costs, we're just a little over $1,000 a square foot to build, not including the land. So, you know, I understand how difficult it is to build. There, you know, aren't a ton of locations left to do it. So, how do you take, you know, the current need and demand and want of the community and realize that, you know, especially with the Housing Needs Assessment recently came out stating that in the next 10 years, Peking County is going to need 2,500 units. Well, I mean, that's a nice idea, but where are you going to put that? And, you know, I think particularly now with just work in general, how many jobs could be remote, you know, and with AI advancing the way it is, you know, the Northwest COG numbers say there's 17,000 jobs in Peking County. But if you looked at those, how many of those could actually be remote and folks wouldn't need to come in? But I think just from my experience, you know, I know what it takes to get a permit and build and then go through the deed restriction process, you know, and we've sold everything we've built, but, you know, I do understand that process.
And do you think your professional role would present any conflicts for you on the APSHA Board?
No, because it's just, you know, it's really the APSHA staff that deals with the actual deed restrictions. So, you know, once the ones we have in permit come online, it would be a deed restriction through APSHA staff and not the Board.
And you can't envision any other scenarios where it's something you might be discussing policy-wise or, I mean, mostly policy-wise, that's kind of really what you're there for.
Guideline changes.
Guideline changes, yeah.
Regulation changes, actually.
Yeah. Do you see how that might?
I mean, I think realistically, you know, affordable housing credits, but that's more about community development, staff council conversation, not with the APSHA Board. You know, I'd be happy to provide input to the Board, but, you know, I don't really see any conflict.
Yeah, I think you're right. And I think, for those who don't know, although I'm sure we all do, Linda has extensive experience working at the city and understands sort of the ins and outs of the way things get done here, and I think that brings a lot of value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other Board questions, comments?
Just a quick question, if you don't mind my asking. Is your address, are you in free market or do you?
I am in free market, yes. I rent free market.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm one of the people who I would love to rent affordable housing, but my category, there just are no units.
Understood.
And I don't want to own, you know, I want to call someone when my water heater doesn't work and I don't want to shovel snow and do any of that.
Sam?
Just for me, same sentiment as Bill, as far as a deep appreciation for your applying to so many boards, how decade you are to the community and the skill set you bring.
Thank you.
I appreciate that you're on the Board of Adjustment now and that you keep shooting for the things that you think you'd be really good at, and I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christine?
I don't have any other questions, thanks, those were good, Bill, and kind of some of the ones that I had in line. And then, to steal Sam's thunder, that he did not ask if you were not appointed, if Peter was appointed to the Board, and would you be interested in an alternate position?
Yes.
Thanks, Christine. I forgot.
Very good. You know, I guess I have a little different of opinion on the role working for a developer who is bringing 50-some-odd units onto the market in the future would have a conflict of interest, because there's regulations related to the size of the bedrooms and what you must have in the kitchen. And these sort of regulations are often changed and looked at, and I would be worried that there's an advantage to the developer as otherwise. I've been fairly disappointed with the lack of progress in buying units and buildings and then not completing them or not moving them forward in our town. That concerned me, and that's not you, that's your employer, I realize that, but I still think the largest developer employer in our community and the housing obligations that they may have in the future really create a conflict for having a paid employee, paid high enough to not qualify for APSHA, making the guidelines. And so, I am concerned about that, and just put that out there, I always do put my concerns out, I don't try to hold them back. Let me ask you this question. You brought up retirement and units. Do you think that people who purchase a unit for a for-sale unit should be able to retire after, you know, the current guidelines or some other modification of that?
I think we need some more information. You know, fundamentally, I think if you buy a unit, people have an expectation that they should be able to retire in it. But if 50% of the folks who live in APSHA housing are nearing retirement age, where is the workforce going to be housed? So, I think before anybody can make, you know, any type of educated assessment on that is we need some actual information of who is living in the units, of those folks who are nearing retirement age, how many of them actually are working, are planning on staying, you know, employed. So, I think we need some more information. I mean, I understand it from, like I said philosophically, that folks want to be able to retire in their unit, but then, you know, where are the workers going to live?
So, you view the Affordable Housing Program as primarily a workforce production program or is it about community?
Well, there, I mean, if, are we going to be a retirement community or, you know, so it, there?
No, I asked the question.
Yeah.
You know, the Aspen area community plan calls for us to be a community from children, and we build bedrooms so people can have children who do not work and are not part of the workforce for 18 or more years sometimes.
Right.
And is that about being able to recruit people who will stay and become part of the community because they're going to want a family here in the future?
Yes, and I understand that point as well.
Do you think we should have ownership units at all?
Well, I mean--
If you are appreciation capped at 3%, expected to keep the unit up, and then told that you have to move out at some point in time to some other place at 66 or 67, is that really going to continue to support an ownership program?
But that's where I think, you know, having more information in general of the ownership units, how many of them are well-maintained? You know, not all of the HOAs participated in the capital reserve study, so we don't have information. And until we have good information about how many units are in disrepair, and, you know, it seems like every year, you know, this will be the second year for the grant repair program. And that's great that that's offered, but, you know, insurance keeps going up, and it's going to continue to go up. So, at what point are HOA dues going to be so much that people, you know, have to make a decision of, do I pay my HOA dues or, you know, buy groceries or, you know, so? And Aspen is not an inexpensive community to live in, so even if people are retiring in these units, I mean, are they participating in the community where the only place that you can shop is City Market? But I did want to bring up the, over the summer, APSHA talked about a relocation assistance program, but those communications really didn't go anywhere. That, to me, is a very interesting idea, because I think some people kind of get stuck in their units because appreciation is only so much. So, if you do want to relocate back to Iowa where your family's from, but you can't physically, you know, sell your unit, maybe you're still O on it, and relocate, you know, it's an interesting idea to me to say, let's set aside a pool of money for maybe folks who want to relocate to closer to family or where the weather isn't winter for six months a year if you're nearing retirement age. You know, could that be a way to free up units also?
Yeah, I think it was around 60 units have sold this year, I could be mistaken, I looked at the number a while ago, and those all sold and relocated without additional government money paying for them to move. How much would we offer people to buy them out and get them out of the community?
But of those, do you know how many of those units were from with APSHA to APSHA? You know, we don't even know that information, you know, I mean--
They actually do keep track of people, you know, on their database.
Well, they do, but they don't make it available to the public. So, they may know it, but I don't know how many people, you know, was it 50 people who had never been in APSHA before who were part of that 60 number, or is it, you know, people moving from one APSHA unit to another? We don't have that information available.
I appreciate your comments, and there is an awful lot to discuss, and we are hoping that we'll be able to have a housing summit with Peking County and work on a lot of those rules and regulations and issues, trying to get them closer together, but there's always going to be inconsistencies in a program like this.
Oh, for sure.
And, you know, I think the program was discontinued in terms of looking at relocation dollars because it kind of said, you're not really building new units, you're just trying to hurry up a cycle of people who die and, or who are passing along or moving back to somewhere else. And that same unit could easily sell to someone who's 54 and 50 and--
Oh, for sure.
Pay a lot of money to not get many years out of it.
There could be people in their 30s who've moved here and tried it and realized that this isn't a community where they can raise their family and they want a bigger yard and want to relocate somewhere else, so. But when the average cost--
And should we pay them to move out, you're saying?
Well, but if it frees up a unit, you know, I mean, if the cost to build is over $1 million per bedroom, and you can say, hey, maybe, you know, if we offer $25,000, $50,000 for relocation and you could free up multiple units in the cost that it is to build one, I mean, just some creative, interesting ideas when, you know, the available space to build is getting less and less, so.
Thank you.
Of course.
I can tell you've been digging in, it's really good.
It's, you know, a lot of ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now, having had our final inter--
I just wanted to highlight one thing--
Yes.
--from Linda Manning. She is also, as she mentioned, on the Board of Adjustment, and that is a board, in pursuit to our charter, there are certain boards where if you serve on one board, you cannot serve on another board. That would be one board that if she, if she were appointed to APSHA, she would then need to resign from the Board of Adjustment. I just wanted to make sure she was aware of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Well, I imagine she'd give up Board of Adjustments if required. So, now, we have our discussion about all the appointments, and I am going to see if we could take it a little bit on the easy side. And we had one applicant for HBC, and that was Barb Pitchford. There is an alternate opening, so we need to continue to advertise as well, but would this Board would like to reappoint Barb Pitchford for HBC?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. And I won't write them down because Pete and Kate are writing them down. Then, we had Judy Clausen applying for the Grants Review Committee, and she was the only term that was up, so we should want to reappoint her? Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
And Mayor, I would just note, generally during work sessions, we don't make decisions. So, I would just ask if you have more than one person that, you know, I think in this case, you know, not calling--
Just to bring to our consent calendar tomorrow--
Correct.
And we will make final decisions then, and if folks have an objection or would like to change the sequence, and I apologize for phrasing it wrong, those who are just the only two, we didn't have any competition.
Yeah, and I would say if you have three or more, we could probably bring that back as an option of one or the other. I, you know, an actual discussion, if there's a split decision, needs to happen probably at the council table tomorrow. Just want to point that out.
Okay. I see what you're saying. And I'm sorry, I didn't have your advice before this meeting. Jennifer Fulton had applied for the Board of Adjustment. Is that to be put to discussion tomorrow on consent calendar?
Yes.
Good by me.
Yep.
For Commercial Core and Lodging Commission, would somebody else like to say who they would support going forward, and we'll see where we all land?
Three regular members, so I would support Angie, Amanda, and Judd.
Likewise.
Yep.
Okay. Does that seem, okay, I would support that. Now, on planning and zoning, we have one regular and one alternate opening. I pronounced it wrong, Teresa?
Teresa.
Teresa, just felt a little funny for me. Teresa would, is our current chair and would like to be reappointed. Is that supported by this Board for consideration on the consent?
Not by me.
No, okay, so that one's a 4-1. And then, it was, Mr. Kenny was in the packet for P&amp;Z, but was he the one who had pulled and withdrawn?
He didn't live within city limits.
He did not live, yeah, that's what I was thinking. He had to pull, but he was still in our packet. So, we will need to continue to advertise for an additional alternate for that position at the very least. Wheeler Board, we had some really great applicants. We do have one member reapplying who had, has served this community well and for a long period of time, Tom Kurt. What is the feelings there also was Jordan Redner and Alana Fly had--
Can I share a couple thoughts there?
Yeah, please.
No, no, yeah, I'm sure you can.
I've been thinking about this a lot, and we talked a lot about this table, about, at this table, about how challenging this Board is because it's so desirable, it seems, and people tend to stick around for a long time and seek reappointment, and seems to be very competitive. And I'm so deeply appreciative to people wanting to serve on these boards and commissions, and particularly people who do multiple terms on these boards and commissions. But in thinking about it in the context of what's best for Aspen, I think we really need a good balance between people who have some institutional knowledge and experience on these boards and some fresh perspectives and some fresh energy. And so, I personally am deeply grateful to Tom for his service on the Board, but I think that the majority of this Board has been around for a long time, and it might be time to consider bringing some new members in. And that's nothing personal against Tom, I think he's great, I'm sure he's contributed in a very meaningful way on that Board for a long time. But I just, in the best interest of the Aspen community, I think it's time to change it up, for lack of a better term.
Yeah. I think we all may be challenged with that same sentiment at some level. Yeah, I, I think we all may be challenged with that same sentiment at some level, and the thing I've kind of thought about is, you know, perhaps the Wheeler Board could create an advisory board to themselves, or an input board, or something, so that they can get these people involved more with what they're doing, at the very least, because there's, there's a lot of energy and new ideas and new things happening, and, you know, I turn 65 this fall, I'll be the first to admit that I don't keep up with all the very modern things that younger people do, and I'm glad there's younger people on this council, and younger people who could serve on boards as well, so. And I sure saw that in the resumes of some of the other people who were applying. Sam?
I had a similar sentiment, but I also like to grandfather people in, so I would be supporting Dr. Kurt in his reappointment. However, this board and Kids First do seem to be ones where, if you're lucky enough to apply when someone's stepping off, you might get it, but then a lot of people who like on this list might not reapply. So it's just a, not a rhetorical question, but a question of should we have term limits on some of these very competitive boards? Like, like I said, it's Kids First and Wheeler, in my experience, where it would probably be nice to get fresh blood in there from time to time, especially because of the nature of those two boards, and how many people want to serve. But at this time, I'd be supportive of Dr. Kurt, because he's more than qualified.
He's dedicated.
And also because, like, yeah, I like to grandfather people in to these sort of situations, rather than put them off.
Yeah, it always feels awkward when you're talking to the other applicants, to say, well, there's this existing serving member who's on there, so they already have a leg up on you, you know, it's, we'd have to find that they didn't do very good for us to reappoint you, and it makes it awkward, but you know, that, that process, I'd be the first to say that. Other feelings at this end of the table?
I agree with all the sentiments spoken thus far, I see both sides of the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we had a lot of really good applicants for the Wheeler Board. I don't think term limits are a bad idea, I like the idea of term limits and moving forward. I do know the concern previously is that some boards you can't fill, so putting term limits on someone then creates another issue where you get rid of someone who's willing to serve on a board that doesn't have enough people. So I don't know if it would be term limits for just a few of the specific boards that were having trouble.
I mean.
Yeah, you just two, okay.
That's, that's all I would think of, and I'm sorry not to interrupt, but is that a move that is even possible, as I look towards the city attorney?
If you could formalize it through an amendment to either your charter or to the code, we could probably do it in the code, which would require just an ordinance. Otherwise, I mean, you know, as boards change, this, you know.
Term amendment, I don't, you know, I don't know if you want to formalize term limits, that's up to you, but yeah, you can do it through probably an ordinance, if you want to do it that way, and you could pick which boards you wanted to do it with, which boards you didn't want to have any term limits on. You know, you might want to hear from your facilitators that, from the departments in the city that helped facilitate those boards with you before you make any decisions. But yeah, it's doable. Otherwise, you could just have sort of an informal, you know, every board kind of may approach it differently, and you could have, you know, each board can agree to do different things, there's nothing that requires you to grandfather it at this point, I would just point out.
Yeah, you know, we're not there yet, but we're looking for a day for a board retreat for this board for 2026, and I would put that as a topic for just some further discussion, a board retreat. You know, I don't think we're doing anything now, and we're not lined up to do anything now, but I appreciate your suggestion, and as I said before, whether it's a quote, "true advisory board," or the Wheeler Board just finds ways to invite more of these people in for their ideas and updates, and, you know, it kind of open house, or, you know, literally talking to the people who've applied, and say, would you guys like to come to a meeting and sit in, and, you know, offer some ideas or something? But I'd love, I'd love to make sure that the board itself is more outgoing and outward-facing than inward-facing, because that's, that is more of what gets to the group think, and we've all been doing it, and we all know what we're doing, and we haven't had outside influences in a while, or questioning. So we'll see if we could do something like that, but I, I will go with the direction that you've put out, Sam, about reappointing Dr. Kurt, but I do feel concerns.
I would, I don't know how you want to do this, Rachel, but I would say both Jordan and Alana impressed me a lot, I'd probably, I think Alana really shone in her interview, and is extremely well-qualified, I'd like to give her a shot.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can change some minds.
Sure.
Anybody else, how do, how do you guys feel for the final, who we'd like on the list tomorrow, and we can debate it again further tomorrow, this is not a final decision, these are directions?
My first vote would be for Dr. Tom Kurt, my second would be for Alana Fly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, given the sort of informal precedent that we've set of allowing people to reapply and be reappointed, I don't know how long that's been going on, or when that was.
It's forever.
Yeah, kind of decided, I would feel uncomfortable breaking from that right now, it's a volunteer position, and people showing up and willing to redo it, and I do think there's a policy decision that we can come to here to improve that process moving forward. So I would support Tom Kurt. I do, I will say, and I've said this for years, I think there should be an ongoing list, when people drop off a board outside of their term limit or their term, that we go back to applicants and ask them if they would like the position first, before having to go through another.
To readvertise.
Readvertise and re-interview. So someone like Alana, in this case, might be first in line for an opening that comes up for an unforeseen reason.
Agreed.
I, I like that idea, and I think it could work sometimes, but I think other times it might not.
Yeah.
You know, if it's an automatic, that somebody else who interviews is going to get it, and that's, that's kind of sounds like you're making it automatic.
Right.
But you might have interviewed three people who you would not want to put on that board, and then they are the automatic, so, I, I, but I agree with the idea certainly of creating a list of the people who've been past interviewees, and what board they applied for, are they still in town, if we find that out, and, and, you know, at least reach out to them. And there might be a modification on that, I think maybe it's specific boards that are more code, code-specific, that are challenging, but that's a good idea. So I think we do have some consensus there, and I think it'd be perhaps up to us to ask the Wheeler Director, would he consider meeting with some of these other applicants to hear some of their ideas, or things like that, not as a formal process, but that, you know, we as council are hearing some really good ideas, maybe the Wheeler Director is already thinking of those things or not, but to ask that, you know, hey, why don't you meet with some of these former applicants, and see what ideas they could bring to the board? Okay, and so now I think we are to the Housing Board. Is that the last one to discuss? Sam?
Well, someone else wants to go first, but I do have, okay.
Okay.
All right. So for me, I would move Peter up to a regular member, and appoint Jaclyn Matthews as the alternate. For Peter, I think he's done a tremendous job, I think he brings a different perspective, and also another personal to me, when we appointed after him Scott Woolley, he was pointed straight to a regular member, didn't have to be an alternate, once again, it just comes down to timing, and Scott's now Vice Chair, and I've supported both of them, so I do think there's like a stepping stone there, and Peter's done a great job. And then as far as Jaclyn as the alternate versus the others, who I thought were very great, the guy who stepped off the board, John Ward, was in banking, and so was Jaclyn, and she talked about loans on deed-restricted properties, and I thought she was very impressive.
Well, so is Carson, who's on the boards in banking.
Yeah, 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 but John also was, and I thought Jaclyn would bring a similar and amazing perspective to the board, so that's the direction I would go, and then, should have mentioned this earlier, but as far as Jim Pomeroy goes, I thought I'd be happy with him on HPC or P&amp;Z if he wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be my opinion.
I was very impressed with Jaclyn as well, who I have down here, as my first choice for the regular member, actually. I really cannot support Peter Grinny going forward, I read through the application, he talked about his social groups and organizations that he was a member of, but he forgot to mention Aspen Deserves Better, and he had formed this group, and they participated very heavily at some level in community dialogue before the 2023 election, and then they produced yard signs for Aspen Deserves Better, and put them right next to their preferred candidates for the Board of Realtors. And the announcement of Aspen Deserves Better was made before, to the Board of Realtors before it was made to the public of Aspen. And so after the election, they seemed to have just disappeared. And it seemed they were very, very close and dancing on the edge of campaign finance law violations, of taking donations, offering yourself as a nonprofit, but then participating in election by putting yard signs next to your preferred candidates. And I, so I, I have a real bit of heartburn with all that. I also think that when you serve on a board, when you live in town and you're not traveling, it's best to go meet your colleagues eye to eye, and be able to say when you disagree eye to eye, and see what they're telling you eye to eye, and not be a zooming in presence that doesn't really look eye to eye to members of the public who come in to talk to the board, or things like that. And no, it's not a requirement of the board that you have to be there in person, but I do think in terms of building teamship, teams, relationships, and coming to understanding with your fellow colleagues, it's important to participate publicly. And so that's, that's why I just really, he is an alternate, he'll retain that seat, it doesn't go away, but I would not be comfortable moving him up to a, the full-time member. That's just my opinion.
For the record, they.
They changed the name?
They changed the name, yeah. I don't know what they do anymore, but they did eventually change the name, so that's why, I don't know if he put that on his resume, I didn't check.
Yeah, but it might have been, I don't know, but it was not, it was very deliberately not Aspen Deserves Better, which he was a co-chair of, and, you know, big supporter of. Others on the potential full position discussion, which is what we're really discussing now, the one position. John?
I'm going to go ahead and go with both, but I'll start with the first one.
Okay.
The full-time position, I will support Jim Pomeroy. I think as a lifelong citizen of Aspen, and living in affordable housing, I think he would deliver a very valuable voice to the board.
Okay.
And as far as Peter Grinny, I'm glad that you brought up that history, I'd kind of forgotten some of that, but I think the public should be aware of that. I do think he brings a different perspective to our board, and he does ask questions that a lot of us wouldn't be asking, so I do support him as an alternate.
Yeah, and that doesn't go away, you know, from our discussions, theoretically. Okay. Christine, do you want to?
Yep. I would support appointing Peter to the regular member. I, you know, don't always agree with Peter, but I, he does his homework, he is very, very knowledgeable on what's going on in affordable housing and development in real estate in this town, and as John alluded to, having served on Appsha, I think that's a very valuable perspective to have at the table, to have some diversity in thought, and I, that's why I would like to see him up there. I would also support, whatever way we decide to go here, Jaclyn or Jim as the alternate. We did just appoint Jaclyn to the Kids First Board, so she, I don't know if that's.
If that's a dual board that you can't be on?
It is not.
Okay.
Okay. So Kids First is a non-permanent board, and the Appsha board requirements do not limit, do not apply, or trigger the charter provision that prevents you from serving on two.
Okay.
And one is a permanent board.
Yeah, and I think, I think they would be great, either of them.
Okay, and let me, I'm just starting a chart, I shouldn't have started before, but Sam, your first choice was Peter, and then?
Jaclyn as the alternate.
Jaclyn as the alternate, and Sam.
Phil, what was your?
I haven't spoken yet.
There we go.
Rare for me to go last. Is Christine finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Christine.
I also support Peter moving up to the regular member. And I disagree with your perspective, Rachel, that the work that Aspen deserves better is a negative thing. I think it's, it's a, they shared a perspective that's shared by many in this community, and I think that, I, I didn't see anything personally, not that I'm a campaign finance expert, but I've definitely talked to a lot of campaign finance experts, and I didn't see anything that was crossing any sort of lines, and I think that's a personal opinion, and.
And I said dancing on the line, I didn't say.
Yeah, but regardless, I want to make it clear that that should be your opinion and not fact. And I do think that they've done a lot of good work, a lot of good work for this community, and put out a lot of facts. I'm also not certain that it's associated, or was associated with the Board of Realtors in any way at all, other than the fact that some of the people involved were members of the Board of Realtors.
No, I just said it was announced first, because I got their newsletter before it was announced publicly.
Okay. I think Peter, as I said during his interview, brings a very informed alternate perspective, and is, and really seems to have the best interest of, of our community at heart, and in making the, our housing program as good as it can possibly be, and I certainly support I don't, can, can we tomorrow decide who will replace Peter as an alternate, or do we have to bring that back at a separate time?
Is that a, one of the joint appointments with the county, or not? It is a joint appointment? So if it's a joint appointment with the county, we can't really formally do anything yet.
Right, so we'll have to bring that back at a separate time?
Yeah.
But can we count these, the interviews that we have had towards that alternate position, or do we have to somehow?
No, you can, and I would say you could, I think, make a recommendation to the county. Ultimately, the county will have to decide, so, because it's joint, and so you could signal to them tomorrow who you would approve of for a joint member, so it's worth discussing.
Yeah, I'd love, I'd like to do that tomorrow, if we can, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of Jaclyn as well, I, you know, I think Linda's fantastic, and I think we are doing this community a disservice by not appointing her to one of these boards and commissions. It doesn't have to be Appsha, she has been so flexible in her interest, and so persistent in her willingness to serve, so I hope that we can find a home for her on one of these boards and commissions that's more impactful than Board of Adjustments, which seems to meet very infrequently and be needed very infrequently, so. I just have found Linda to be smart, wonderful, caring, dedicated, since I met her 15 years ago, when she was in the clerk's office, and she helped me figure out how to open a restaurant in this town, so I've long been a fan of her.
Very good. Okay, well, roughly, we seem to have a three-person majority that would like to see Peter move up to the regular position, and I seem to have caught, because Jaclyn would have been my first choice, almost everyone's saying she's like a second choice for alternate, other than you, John, who wanted Jim Pomeroy. So would, I guess we would discuss, should we make a recommendation to the county for Jaclyn as a second alternate, or Jim? And I like Jim a lot, but I, I did like the mortgage lending skills and some of the discussion issues she brought forward at the table.
I'd support Jaclyn.
Yeah, so, okay. There we go, we have a slate to bring forward. And if you thought that was hard, wait till we talk about restaurants.
I'm ready for it.
How about we take just a quick five-minute break, and then start digging into the next topic? Okay. Thank you.
We just have to choose four.
All right, well, we are back at the work session for Monday, January 26th. We are now going to go into a discussion of the restaurant applicants for the Yogi's space. And we've seen the packets. We were covered with a nice story by Lucy at the Daily News, so the public has known. And let's just start putting out the best few. We'll go with Sam first. I'm gonna go to this table and then back over, Bill. So Sam?
Does anyone else want to go first? I'm eager and happy. You go.
No, I, are we just gonna go for it and throw out like our top three or do we want to kind of talk about what, how we came to these?
I think, yeah. Just kind of lightly cut on it because the larger discussion is, is after the presentations that they, where we can ask questions about what we liked about.
All right, so I'll say first off, deep appreciation to all the applicants. I was very impressed and very happy to see that we got 12.
Yeah.
Second off, I thought when I looked at this list, how encouraged I was by the Armory Food Hall that was coming about in hopefully summer of 2018, because I was thinking my s-
28. Whenever.
2018.
Thank you. Going backwards in time.
Time-traveling for us all.
Don't quote me on that or scrub that. 20, 28.
Please, let's go back to 2018.
No, what I'm thinking about.
Are you sure? We'd have to relive COVID.
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be okay with that, given what's happening now.
That's so funny.
Did you see the ski report about all the Canadians who just stopped coming to all the East Coast resorts?
Ticket passes sales down 65, 80%.
We'll throw a nostalgia 2018 party, all right?
Yeah, I won't go there.
So again, very excited about the Armory coming on in 2028. But with that, looking through this entire list, looking for, you know, the three major criteria for me are well-known in this community. And, and not all these, like, the ones that I list are gonna like most definitely meet this criteria, but this is why I want to bring them back, but at least meet enough of it where I'm like, these are the four.
And that would be a good way to say why you're voting for what you want.
Yeah, so
Known?
Known, you know, financial, and then things I want to negotiate on, like menu price. This really sent me into deep thought about what is affordable. It's a nationwide thing we talk about, but what is affordable, what's Aspen affordable? And I think to myself, Big Rap and Greatful Deli, as far as two that are not applying here, as far as just like what I'd like to think about what is affordable these days, because when I first moved here, back in the teens of 2000, you know, I could get Big Rap for less than $10, but now it's more with inflation, but still the cheapest thing in town as far as my go-to meal. So with that, the four that I'd like to bring back as finalists would be 520 Grill, Bamboo Bear, Jaffa, and Masala and Curry.
Okay. All right. This side of the table, who wants to go first?
I'm happy to go. I too had similar thoughts to Sam on just the enthusiasm and quality of applicants for this, that I'm hopeful for the Armory and what we might see there when that comes forward. When I narrowed down my list, I also thought about experience in the community. We've not always succeeded in bringing vendors or restaurateurs that had not prior, previously operated a restaurant or establishment, and so I think bringing in someone who really does know the market based on having been in the market would be the, a good decision for us to make. And then some kind of just simple stuff like complete applications and making sure all of the questions were answered. There were some that didn't have that, and so I, I kind of had to move those to the bottom just based on that. And so I, I had narrowed down to three and I can add a fourth in there, but my three were 520 Grill, Bamboo Bear, and Jaffa.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interject, Rachel. I just wanted to add one more thing that I forgot, which was the other criteria I used was thinking about the food that they were gonna provide, like the genre, because I was thinking to myself what the community would desire in that sense and
Thanks for saying that on my list, yeah.
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 Just press repeat on Christine's comments and actually Sam's. Those are my top four too. 520, Bamboo Bear, Jaffa, and what was it? Masala Kitchen?
Masala and Curry.
Masala and Curry. Established businesses. Know our clientele, know the valley of operated businesses here.
All right. Bill?
Thanks. Echoing a lot of those comments, you took a lot of the words out of my mouth. I, I tried to compartmentalize this into sort of concept and what I think would do well in, in that particular location and serve this sort of affordability niche and, and missing food concept niche. And then I also took a hard look sort of the financial side and the capability side in order to mitigate against some of the issues that we've recently experienced and not repeat that. And those didn't always dovetail super well, unfortunately. A lot of these concepts I, I think would do reasonably well, but not all of them in that location and in this market. Some are, in my personal opinion, more desirable than others at this point in time in the Unfortunately, some of the concepts that I like the most for that space, I also have serious concerns about their financial capabilities and strength and their ability to perform long-term. That being said, the three that sort of align closest, and I, I will continue to have sort of critical questions and comments on as we move forward are 520 Grill, Bamboo Bear, and Jaffa. I'm not gonna add a fourth. I'm actually gonna, going to plant a seed for some sort of criticism that I have of the Masala and Curry concept. I think it's a great concept and a great restaurant, and I've eaten there. I just don't think that's the right concept for that space. I don't think it works well to serve sort of the kid users in that location, which for me is an important consideration. I, I think the other concepts can do either reasonably well or very well to serve the kid population that are the, a big segment of the user group of the park. So nothing personal against them, it's just about a concept fit. And I just wanted to plant that seed now as we move forward.
Very good. Let's see.
Oh, one other thing I had to add that I also wanted to plant, I'm sorry, Rachel.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like us all to be thinking about affordability and, and subsidy and how those two things relate. And this is intended to be a subsidized space to make concepts more affordable. And in at least one of the applications, I noticed that the proposed menu prices were more than their current menu prices in non-subsidized real estate. I'm really struggling with that. Really, really struggling with it. Why would we do that? How is that fair to this community to subsidize? And it is genuine subsidy because we could sell this space, we could rent this space at free market rates. We have a lot of other options as opposed to doing what we are talking about doing. So how is it fair to the community to allow someone to charge the same or more if we are giving them a subsidized rent, a discounted rent? That's something that I'm really having trouble with.
And I'm not honestly sure which one you're talking about because there were so many, but it could be anticipation of what we're still seeing continued inflation, or maybe they're getting ready to raise their prices at their current location and for the summer season. I just don't know. And, you know, I, I can think back to other locations, Public House or other opportunities when you pretty-
Can we help you?
Ray, can I talk to you private?
No, I'm in a meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. But, you know, so you, people get the contract with one set of prices and then when they've opened up and five months have passed, you see a different price. So I guess I'm not as, you know, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I, I just thought it was, I thought it was, they didn't articulate why the prices were going up.
Well, we could ask in the meeting.
Of course we can, and that's why I'm planting the seed. But also the very nature of the fact that they didn't recognize that that would be an issue when they're applying for subsidized space
Yeah.
gives me pause.
I, I think that's a good point and for applicants to consider as they come back in front of us and, and hopefully can think about that before to kind of defend those decisions or those sample menus, because it was a concern I also had, not just their menu, but comparative price points around town for similar items. We're subsidizing the space, so.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, and sorry again.
Go ahead.
I, I really appreciate you bringing up the kid aspect of this, and I am not a parent. But I was thinking about when I was a kid and my parents would give me money to go buy lunch, and I was thinking about, you know, some of these price points being like, it's, I know it's 2026, I know the year, but like trying to give your kid a 20 and a 10 to go buy lunch versus just a 20 when they're a kid and that's how much it should be. So, and once again, I talked about affordability and then Aspen affordability and thinking even in 2026, I feel like it should be under $20 and especially for the kids' menu. So I very much appreciate you bringing that up because I did not before.
Yeah, it was, it's a challenge. It is a challenge. Well, I'd have to tell you, I really had a lot of agreement with everyone across the board here. 520 Grill, Jaffa, Bamboo Bear, Masala, and Curry. And then I was interested in one of the taco spots or, you know, the turkey restaurant. I love kebabs and stuff. But is that, you know, right? And I, I, I can only ditto what you said, Sam, that the enthusiasm shown, the interest in this really bodes well. This is a good market. It is, you know, a tough town to make it between. You know, I, I keyed in on things when people said, we plan to hire locally versus we already have staff. You know, that, most people don't realize what it's gonna be like to try to hire locally. And those were some of the type of things, thinking about the kids, the menu at some level, thinking about well, how many other places are doing this in town already that's something comparable to this. But those would be, the Masala and Curry was my fourth choice, if I was making a fourth choice. And so we've heard that from a few, but Bill, you'd only gotten down to three and Christine, you just had three. Are we trying to reduce it to three? Is that what people would like?
Well, if, if my comments about Masala and Curry resonated with anybody and we could reduce it to three in, in order to make this process more efficient, I'd say let's do that. If not, and we want to get to four, that's also a manageable number, I think.
I, I don't want to waste anybody's time coming in to this board. You know, those, those are different foods than we have, whether they're particularly kid-friendly. I, I'm not sure about that. It would be nice to have a little more diversity in the food offerings in town, but perhaps we'll see them for the Armory. So if
Yeah, that might be a better fit, in my opinion.
Let me ask a shake of heads. Do, are we comfortable moving three, 520 Grill, Bamboo Bar, and Jaffa forward to formal presentations?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I won't be heartbroken if Masala and Curry is left off the list, but I will say I would have given them a chance to defend the kid position, but I might agree with you that they might be better in the Armory. But yeah, if people want three, I completely get it, so.
Well
Longer comments.
John had had Masala as a fourth. Sam, you did as a fourth as well, and I would have put them in as a fourth. I don't know if anybody else would have. Didn't you use that?
I only had three.
You only had three?
Yeah.
And so three of us did want to kind of hear from them, but that just makes, makes our choices harder later.
That's okay.
Any thoughts?
That goes to the mayor.
Yeah. Thank you, John.
So we'll have Masala as well, and we'll keep it as an even four, and I think that that's good. You know, some people asked for potential real significant changes to the lease that we're offering. Other people said they'd accept it as is. I, I think these are the, the finer points that we need to really dig into. And so there we have it.
And, and one more time, thanks to everyone for your enthusiasm, your efforts put into the applications. I know it's not easy, especially in the middle of the season and on a relatively short timeline. And can't reiterate enough how much I agree with you, Sam. Like, I'm so enthusiastic about Armory and some of these concepts getting into the Armory. And what a wonderful community space that will be once we get some of these things open.
Very good. So we are now onto our next item on the agenda, which is the lumberyard update, unless you need anything else more from us on that, Pete.
Nope, I'm all set.
Great, thank you. Thank all of you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Everson with the City of Aspen, and I'm here with Kimball Krangell with Gorman and Company. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, Kimball Krangell with Gorman and Company. Good to see you all again.
Nice to meet you. Come back.
So this is the developer update for the lumberyard affordable housing development. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if that is okay. That should look a little better, maybe? There you go. Okay. So I'm gonna talk through the background real quick and then, you know, Kimball was hoping that you guys might ask a lot of questions about the progress, but I'll go through the progress as well to this point, and then we'll talk about some of the outstanding coordination that's still going on to get ready to start the project. Kimball's gonna talk about the updated sources and uses for the financing and funding for the project. And then one of the things we want to work out with you is some of the dates for the upcoming city council, sort of input and approval that will be needed prior to the first closing for the project. Does that sound good?
And have you been working with Pete on potential dates for that yet?
Yep, yeah.
We've been working off of the city council calendar, and so I think we're prepared for most of what's here, but we can talk through that. for most of what's here, but we can talk through that. In terms of background, the City of Aspen, of course, bought the Lumber Yard property back in 2007. And then in 2019, we started that community outreach process in earnest. The entitlements were improved in 2023 for 277 to up to 304 units in three separate buildings. In 2024, we started that RFQ/RFP process that led us to do further due diligence in 2025 on Gorman and Company, signed an agreement with Gorman and Company for the development in July of 2025. Gorman's plan includes 277 units in three buildings. There's going to be two financial closings to accomplish that. The first closing is coming up scheduled for this April, and the second closing will follow along about a year later. That is aimed at resulting in an estimated completion that sort of ranges between 2028 and 2029 as each of the buildings comes online one after the next. The estimated city contribution throughout is $250 million, and we'll show you some more of that. Any questions on any of that background?
John?
That includes the land cost.
Asterisk.
The $250 million, I should clarify, is the city's contribution towards Gorman's implementation, so it's a going-forward cost. There is a note on the slide that says this does not include the city's prior sunk costs of approximately $40 million.
And which is kind of covered by the little pop-up thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so a lot of times folks want to know, you know, what's the all-in cost? So it does include the, but I should also mention that it doesn't also include the $10 million in revenues on the Lumber Yard property that the city collected for about 12 years. So, you know, we have the information, none of the information's lost. The pertinent information about the deal with Gorman is the city's $250 million contribution going forward. If there are any further questions about the city's prior sunk costs, feel free to contact me at any time, yourselves or anyone out there listening. My contact information is included at the end of the slideshow. Fair enough?
Yeah, I'm just really glad that we have these numbers. That's the one detail that the public really wants to know about, in my opinion, is the cost of it. And so this helps us educate the public that it's not as bad as people think it is.
So I should probably further clarify that, you know, that's not the total cost for the project, that's the total cost for the city's contribution.
Exactly.
There are additional costs of, above and beyond what the city's contributing that will be paid for through the operating income of the property over a period of time. That's part of the financing, right? So when we talk about, you know, the city's contribution, there's the upfront contribution, the prior sunk costs, and then there's sort of ongoing operational funds, you know, with inflows and outflows along the way. So there's a lot of moving parts, but it's, you know, not things that we don't know about, right?
Chris, maybe I want to use future slides, so I don't want to jump in, but just to kind of balance out John's question, what is Gorman bringing to the table? And I know it's a lot, so I just wanted to put that as parallel to this.
Yeah, we'll get to that in about three slides from now-
Okay, perfect.
And remind me if you don't get your question answered, okay?
Thank you.
All right. So Gorman was hired in July, and there's been a ton of work that's happened in the past six months. You know, you can stop me at any time. There's been, you know, a lot of, you know, teamwork between Kimball's team, our team, her and her contractor, her and her legal consultants, her and her design team. You know, we had to hand over the phase zero permit application process to them. They are now shepherding that, and the infrastructure project is near permit-ready. They also had to advance the designs for building number one with 104 units through a schematic design process, a DD process, and then they brought that into, do you want to talk about the process with PFL?
Yeah, sure. So to do a modular design, as you all probably are well aware, you do so much of your design work upfront. And so we are already, as Chris mentioned, in collaboration with our entire design-build team and the city. We have locked the design on that. That's already been sent to the modular. We've already put our deposit down to hold our place in line for production to start later this summer.
Yes.
Very good.
So the phase zero infrastructure permit is under review and near-ready. The phase one permit has also been submitted and is also under review. So everything that, you know, will be part of the scope of construction for the first phase is in permit review now, and we will, they'll start construction shortly after the first closing. So the closing's scheduled for April, construction hopefully starting around May. Go ahead, Bill.
During the entitlement process, we talked about how the design would likely evolve significantly. Those drawings were never really intended to be a permit or construction set, and there was some flexibility in unit count and things that we anticipated to evolve. Could you, I don't know if you planned to do this in this presentation, I don't think I saw it in the slides, but could you hit on at least some of the high points of what may have evolved-
Sure.
-since then?
Yeah, so by and large, we're completely in compliance with the PD that was recorded. So some of the, for example, building footprints shifted slightly, nothing got bigger, but as we transitioned to a full modular design, there were definitely some pieces and parts that shifted around within the context of what was allowable in the PD. But the unit count is the same, the unit mix is the same, the parking is the same. You know, we really took the PD to heart and realized that that was the community's desire and vision and really tried to stick exactly to that PD. Other than that-
You guys brought a lot of experience to the, the unit plans themselves inside the units and I think made a lot of improvements to the unit plans, made them more efficient. There's actually less, like, total floor area than was approved. It's slightly less, but it's, you know, having some flexibility to be able to remove, you know, even a small percentage of floor area on this project adds up to be a lot.
Yeah, that's right. And we do, we are pretty particular about our floor plans. We know what folks like to see. For example, interior storage is a big one. So things like that, we need to fine-tune just based on our experience and how we expect folks to want to live here at Lumber Yard. And then just the coordination, there's significant coordination between your chases with modular and how your MEP systems flow and how the structure lives with the buildings itself as well. So some of that did fluctuate, but, but really by and large, the plans look a whole lot like they did before we joined the team.
Okay.
Yeah, can I follow up on that first, Bill?
Sure.
So you're saying the bedroom unit sizes didn't change?
Correct.
Anything like that? Okay, thank you.
Are you using the same architect still?
We are not. We took the great work that Cushing Terrell did, and then we moved it into Gorman Architecture.
Oh, you have an internal architecture?
We have an internal architecture firm that has taken, you know, the design that was taken to date, and we've rebuilt the plans to be modular in full. And, you know, as Chris mentioned, we actually have three permits under review right now, one at the state level with the modular, one with the infrastructure phase zero permit, and one with the building permits with the city.
Great. And Chris, we have permission to continue to use Cushing's design essentially as it was?
Sure.
That was built into-
Yeah, we own those plans. Like she said, though, they've, they've basically rebuilt the plans.
That's great. Just, there's like an aesthetic license element to that. We want to make sure we're covered on. Could we have a follow-up summary document that just highlights any major or notable, I shouldn't call them major, notable changes so we just understand where things are shifting? Again, we don't need great detail, but like, hey, here's what a typical one-bedroom floor plan used to look like, here's what it looks like, here's what we're proposing it to look like now, here's what the general lobby area looked like before, here's what we're proposing it to look like now. Again, not, I don't need super granular detail, just so we have some idea of how this is evolving.
Sure.
I'd suggest that they are in substantial compliance with the plan development documentation.
Yeah, I'll leave it up to you, whatever you think is notable for us to view.
To the point where you won't see the differences from what was recorded and what was looked at here and the plan development documentation that was recorded, but we can try to come up with some of the small things. You know, anything that actually gets away from the plan development, you know, needs to be a change to the plan development. And we're not suggesting that there had been anything that would be considered a change to the plan.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that either. But there is, and this was going to be my last point in this section, is from my perspective, the design language wasn't gospel, and it wasn't necessarily exactly what the community wanted. And we do want your input on, I do want your input on that. And if there's something you think can be enhanced or more durable, more, more attractive, more functional, we want your experience and your input on that. So from my perspective, please don't take that as gospel. Please don't think it's not malleable at all. I very much think it is. And again, I don't want to go back through the PUD process, but I do want to see this evolve to the best version of what it can possibly be for the use that we anticipated.
Yeah, we're really quite excited with how the plans have evolved, and I think we did add that, that layer and that lens of durability and livability that we brought to the table. And, you know, what's been really fun about Lumber Yard is the collaboration across the team, not only the consultants, the architects, but also with the city's input across different departments. I think we all feel pretty good about where we are in this, this point in time.
Great. Thanks.
Are there questions at this point or comments? The one thing I had said, and I was here two years before and then took a little time out and, and back, but the one thing I really wanted to stress in the project was soundproofing between units. Because, you know, people come home late at night sometimes from late-night shifts and just aren't really wound down enough yet to go to sleep. And I do experience that with my Hunter Creek. It's an ownership unit, but the one unit above me is a rental. And so there's times when, you know, hey, we're just having a birthday party and we'll say it's okay, and then they have a birthday party every other week, it seems like, that go pretty late at night. So, you know, I just want to make sure these are really soundproofed. And then Chris has probably told you the experience we had with Burlingame when the design was faulty from the modular company not following the right design in terms of the plumbing being too close to the walls and freezing with our temperature. So those are just the small things to look out for in my mind. And then just since it's an opportunity to talk with you directly, we've gotten various flack at different times about parking and congestion and that we did fully park this project. And I think that that's important. People don't fly out with their stereo and all their other life possessions and set up a kitchen. But to the extent that there are ways to be auto disincentive to not use your car as often in your rate structure, I'd love to look at something like that so that, you know, everyone has, you know, five passes, 10 passes a month or something, but if they start using it daily instead of using the mass transit, which we're going to be spending a couple million dollars to finance out there, we'd love to find a way that there was auto disincentive sewn into the parking with the units. I can't recall if I imagined this or if somebody had told me there would be a differential rate if you were not using the parking garage or not. And I think there's other ways to monetize those spaces in the future as we go forward if people are not using those for, for storage, for long-term storage or other opportunities. So just, so that we have to think about if we need to change any, any code or any PUD language to allow those things in the future. We're open to that.
Thank you for that. We do have parking management strategies when we have, you know, parking is scarce anywhere, no matter how much you build, it seems. And so we will have some parking management strategies, and I appreciate what you just shared. So we'll definitely bring that into, to our thinking.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Chris, we'll let you continue unless somebody else had something, okay, with your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks. So their contractor has also been involved throughout the process. They've been looking at constructibility of the plans along the way, making suggestions about materials, means and methods. They performed an estimate recently, which is going to help to inform our final budget. And we've also been working with the city's legal team as well as Gorman's legal team on preparing the legal documents that will be needed for the closing. And we've also been working with APSHA pretty closely on the lottery process, how tenants, how applicants will get qualified, how the lottery process will work, what the priorities are in that lottery process, which you all had input to. And so we've been documenting that process with APSHA. So you'll see when I go to the next slide that there is an APSHA board component to this because the development, and we've done this before, the development will request from the APSHA board that APSHA be a special limited partner in the operating entity for the purpose of tax exemption. And so there is a role for APSHA, and we've been interfacing with APSHA staff as well as with APSHA's counsel, Tom Smith, on all of that.
Great, thank you for that.
So a bit of outstanding coordination that is going on. The Lumber Yard is going to have a connection to the City of Aspen Electric Grid, and in order to make that connection, we actually have to go off property in the AABC so that we can connect to the City of Aspen's electric infrastructure and deliver power to the, to the Lumber Yard. It's been a bit of an adventure finding all the easements that we need in the roadway and on the adjacent properties to get there. Do you want to talk about where we think we're at on that?
Yeah, adventure is a good way to put it. You know, having any infrastructure come in off-site usually requires puzzling together how to get from A to B, and in this case, through AABC Road. And we do think that we have a pathway that is feasible and have had excellent coordination, I would say, across the board between Pittkin County, City of Aspen Electric, the city as well, and our entire team really troubleshooting options and ideas out as recently as this afternoon. So this has been a very hands-on effort, but the coordination has been outstanding, and I think we feel pretty positive about where we're going.
And is that including working with the Aspen Airport Business Center Management Group?
We've been really working on the legal documentation and the easements that exist because you've got to have those pathways-
Yeah.
...to be able to transport anything in utility easements.
Okay, I just don't want you to run into a roadblock later if you haven't talked to the management company. And they've sold a lot of the parcels to individual owners there now at the AABC, but still a lot is in the John McBride portfolio, and I just would like to make sure we're not running into roadblocks later. Bill?
Two things there. One, I believe it's accurate that we decided not to, the city wasn't going to perform phase zero, and we put that into Gorman's scope, right? But we were very close to approving phase zero financially and moving forward with those construction contracts. And how did we not have the easement and utility routing figured out at that point in time?
Because our permit process, our permit hadn't been fully through the review process. So one of the things that I always say, Bill, is, you know, our designs, when we submit our designs into the permit application process, they're usually very good. Our consultants do a great job. But the folks in the City of Aspen's regulatory departments also do a great job, and they find things and they help us make the project better. And so, you know, we work pretty closely with the folks in our regulatory departments, in particular engineering and utilities, and sometimes they find things that we need to work our way through. And every project that gets submitted to the City of Aspen, whether it's a City of Aspen project or not, goes through that.
Well, that's a diplomatic response, and I appreciate it, Chris, but in my experience, no permitting agency has ever helped me figure out an easement. That's the applicant's responsibility.
It just so happens in this case that the City of Aspen, as the applicant's attorney, is also the regulatory department's attorney. So we've been involved- So we've been involving Kate a lot in that process, studying easements, looking at easements on properties, nearby properties. It's just part of the job. It's actually pretty standard.
I don't mean to grill you, Chris, but this is giving me a lot of concern. It feels really late to be figuring this out, given that you had asked us previously, and then I think it was retracted, or maybe we even did approve the financial part of Phase Zero, and you decided not to proceed with it. I'm a little fuzzy on that. I think that was the order of operations. We actually approved the, I may have dissented, but I think Phase Zero spending authority and contracts were approved, and then you decided not to proceed with that contract. And so the fact that we're now talking about figuring out the path to get electricity to the site is very concerning to me. And it makes me wonder what else we're missing and what else hasn't been thought through at this stage of the game.
So we're being transparent about this outstanding coordination that is currently in process.
It's in process. And you feel there is a path forward? And I don't know if the answer to Bill's question is that we had a path in mind and we were just going to continue to pursue it, or we hadn't thought of that? Or, I mean, I understand the nature of your question. Why was this not answered before?
Well, I'm expressing a concern. I don't think I have a question, but I do have ongoing concern based on what I just heard. And additionally, I, as a very recently, own one of the buildings that's quite proximate to the Lumber Yard site in the ABC. So we'll have to, if there's something that comes up, I'm just giving you advanced notice there.
That you might have to start recusing yourself. Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Utility easements in the AABC are a bit of a patchwork.
Yeah, I believe that. Are some on Holy Cross and some on City?
It takes a lot of studying to figure out who holds.
Who's on who? Who's on first? John?
Yeah, while we're talking about electricity, I wanted to make sure we are still on track to have solar, solar panels generate 75% of the electricity that'll be used out there?
Yes.
Excellent. And?
Including the storage with the batteries that was part of the PD.
Awesome. I think public would love to continue to hear that. Have there been any talks with the Community Office of Resource Efficiency about possibly getting some grants to help offset the cost of that? Because I know they're available through the state or have been. I'm not sure what's going on with grants of that nature at this point, but?
All of that is a little fluid these days, as we all kind of know. So our primary focus is dialing in the design right now, getting to permit and starting infrastructure work in April such that we have every day of season to do a good amount of infrastructure work that's associated with Phase Zero, which will take us two building seasons to complete while the building one is going up.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Yeah, I would like to say I really appreciate this aggressive timeline. This is exciting to see that this could be, the building could actually be started this September and finished by June of 2029 is, makes me very happy. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions right now? I think your concern is noted, Bill, and we'll continue to follow that going forward and look for any other unexpecteds. Go ahead, please.
Sure. So as I mentioned, two closings. On the left-hand side of the screen is 2026, closing number one. On the right-hand side of the screen, 2027, closing number two. And so the estimated sources and uses on the left-hand side for closing number one, about $150 million. You can see the city's contribution there in two pieces, the Phase One piece and the Phase Zero piece. If you go across the page and you add up the city Phase Two and the city Phase Three pieces, the whole thing adds up to $250 million. You mentioned, Rachel, what is Gorman bringing to the table?
Yes.
The first item on the estimated sources list, the first mortgage, Gorman will be procuring that. The second light item, equity slash subordinate debt, the 15 million, Gorman will be doing that. And then that bottom line item, Gorman Equity, they will be taking care of that. Do you want to talk about some of those things?
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, it's pretty clear on the screen. We prorated the Phase One, Two and Three building costs per unit by the subsidy available. So that's why that math looks very specific. And then Phase Zero funds, that's based on estimates that we've built ourselves and we believe is accurate. And the rest is just, you know, pulling in the sources to pay for the uses.
And then the amount of your first mortgage and equity sub debt, you're just, those are to be determined? Is there a range that we know that those are in? I think I'm only asking because there was a question earlier about how do we get back to the full price of the project?
Sure. I mean, those are pretty close. As you all know, the intention of Lumber Yard is to be very affordable. And so in simple terms, the rent revenue that's created minus the operating expenses to keep the property in the condition that we all want it to be in a sustainable, living property, does not afford much debt. The net operating income is quite low. It's about, it's pretty low. It lives like a Lytec project would live, where rents are very low. And because of that, the capacity to raise mortgage dollars is not as high. So the first mortgage is low. In the equation, it's kind of like a three-legged stool. You've got equity, sub debt and first mortgage debt. They all have to play well together. We're out for solicitation for all of those items right now. The other element that we talk a lot about and bring to the table is you don't want the tail wagging the dog. In the scheme of the investment by the City of Aspen for this public facility, those are smaller numbers than what the city's bringing to the table. You want the city's deed restriction to be in first place. You want the city's policies and APCHA's policies and regulations to be first and foremost and not diluted by other sources. And so that absolutely is part of the equation as well.
Let me ask one more question and come to you, Bill. Are we applying for or qualified for any of that 1, 2, 3 state housing money or things like that, grants through DOLA, anything?
We're watching all of those sources. Prop 123 equity round will open in February of this year. They have had quite a few funds that have been diluted to try to rebalance the state of Colorado's budget. There's only $22 million available in this first round, and it's going to be exceptionally competitive. The devil's always in the details. And the documents, again, that come with any financial sources have to match the imperative first position and first goal of Lumber Yard. And so some of these sources may be available, but they may not be what you want.
Right, right. We don't want Lytec. We can't do that.
There's no Lytec on the table.
And I know that. It's just a joke. Bill?
Rachel, that was one of my two questions. But could you expand a little bit more on it? I believe in your RFP response, you talked about bringing other types of grant money and maybe something beyond grants, some sort of equity type or alternative debt structures to the table. Is there anything else that?
There's a lot of?
Been able to secure, and should we know about that at this point in time?
So nothing has been secured. It's all up for solicitation right now. We have ruled some things out because of what I was talking about with the strings attached. You don't want a subordinate debt that's in a third position to come in and actually say that their deed restriction is going to be paramount to the APCHA regulations, for example. So we just know through documents that we work with on other projects what may not be a match as we dial into the APCHA regulations with APCHA at the table. But what I will say is I'm very confident in the solicitation efforts that we have out, and I do not see these as an obstacle at all to our closing timeline or our commitment to Lumber Yard.
Okay, and if we don't get grant dollars that we like or alternative debt dollars that we like, which funds are used to backfill those dollars?
Well, that's what those two line items are in the sources. So first mortgage and then equity and/or sub debt.
Okay, could you talk further about that second line, equity slash sub debt? Is that basically what I was just describing is alternative debt structures and/or grant money?
It's not going to be grant money, but it's going to be private market rate equity. It's going to be philanthropic, social impact equity. And then sub debt is more like mezzanine debt that we brought in through the RFP. Those are still on the table so long as their subordination agreements are in keeping with like the ethos of the Lumber Yard goals.
All right, so that second bullet point is really sort of a flexible bucket of?
Possibilities.
Dollars of possibilities.
It is. The three, first mortgage, equity and sub debt, all have to play together. So it's a puzzle that will come together to create that total source.
And when do you anticipate having these all clarified?
Those are going to be final right at the end of March, but the conversations are ongoing now.
Great. Please keep us updated on this. Thanks so much for the answers.
Some of that solicitation that they have going on in the background could possibly come back to you. Someone who you know might say, I'm interested in investing. I heard about this opportunity. And so if that comes up, feel free to refer those folks back to Gorman because that will all be going through their organization rather than through the City of Aspen.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So the target closing date for the first closing is April. The construction will follow that. And that construction's going to include the Phase Zero infrastructure and building number one with 104 units. We have APCHA board dates already locked in. An update to them on February 18th and a resolution request to them for the special limited partner piece. We had some flexibility on the city council dates, although I think we need to ask you if we can be back here on March 9th for a follow-up work session to this. That work session will focus on the final budget for closing number one and also kind of a summary of the closing documents that you're going to be asked to approve. We will then come back on March 24th with a resolution asking you to approve the closing documents. So through that process, March 9th and March 24th, you will know everything about the budget and everything about the sources and uses. And you will have had the opportunity to look at all of the closing documents by then.
Okay, that sounds good. There we go.
So that was everything. We have probably a lot of room for additional questions or discussion.
I think we've gotten some of our questions out through the dialogue, but John, you leaning forward?
No questions.
Bill, additional comments now?
No, I look forward to that sort of design deviation, sort of notable design deviations report, again, just so that we can understand where?
Even though they're fairly minor, Chris, we understand that. I think it was understood, just where there seems to be some variation.
Yep, and I want to stay updated on sort of how the financing's all coming together. Please. Thanks.
I wouldn't expect a lot in terms of design changes. Probably just floor area differences and?
Yeah, yeah.
Again, even on the units, you talked about having interior storage. We'd like to see what was in the entitlement package from this is a prototypical one-bedroom unit to what we're going with now. Even if the changes are subtle, I think it's important that we sort of understand it.
That collaboration process, I will say, when we dug into it, they questioned everything. And we pointed to the, we pointed to the plan development documentation, which we carefully recorded with notes and caveats that said, you know, minor deviations from what's in those plans is totally acceptable as long as sort of the big picture energy goals and the big picture project goals stayed in place. Different ways of coming at it, acceptable. And so, you know, we went back and forth on a lot of the heating systems, hot water systems, you know, just overall, you know, floor plans. In order to get some things to fit, you know, Cushing Terrell had some tweaks here and there, and you guys kind of straightened out some of the tweaks. I don't think it's much that you'll see on paper, but we'll do our best to show some differences.
Okay, sounds good.
I do have one quick question. With the modular construction, does that expedite the timeline at all when using modular instead of, you know, hand-built? And how much?
So the benefit for modular is really taking the pressure off subcontractors that are very, very scarce in a valley like this. It absolutely minimizes time under construction under weather conditions. I mean, imagine trying to build right now, even in a mild winter like we've all had. It's still really difficult to build through winter. It lets us focus on Phase Zero for the whole summertime season. And then really, once the upgrade, the garages are built, come in with the boxes and start going vertically. So the time to construct actually happens off-site. And then you get to see the magic when the boxes go up. It will cut a little bit of time off, but what it really does is it cuts that lack of predictability around weather out. Lack of predictability around sub availability out. That's what we're chasing with modular.
Great, thanks.
And it also allows them to be doing site work on the site at the same time the buildings are being built in the factory. So those things are happening in parallel rather than one after the next.
Great. Any further questions or comments? Well, the only thing I can say is that from coming from Colorado Association of Ski Towns and municipal leagues meetings and other organizations I'm a member of, Gorman continues to have a really great reputation. And I haven't run into anyone who hasn't said, oh, great, you're working with Gorman. You're, you know, that's so good. So I wanted to pass along the compliments. Thank you for being our partner. Keep us updated. It's better to have no surprises, and we'll just keep moving this along. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything else for us, Pete? Oh, did you say something?
No, I just said thanks.
Nothing else for tonight, Mayor?
Okay, well, I think I've mentioned to others before that we should all bring in our calendars and let Pete know of any future vacations coming up. We don't have to do that tonight, but, you know, you might be having a big wedding ceremony somewhere or something. I am still hopeful, my niece is going to have her baby somewhere around February 10th, and I might end up heading down for that. She is fortunate. She has a lot of family who thinks they're coming out this time, so she wouldn't be alone. So I'm not sure what that requirement will be. And, but we'll go from there. But just feed any potential plans into Pete so he knows when he'll have a quorum or not. So appreciate that, especially with all these big kind of deadline dates coming up on things. Okay, we're done. Thank you, Grassroots TV. Oh, you?
Can I make one just announcement?
Yes.
An amendment was made to your agenda packet just this evening. I sent you an email. It was the Salesforce contract. It's on your consent agenda.
Okay.
The contract amount is not changed. It's just the master service agreement and the quote needed to be updated to, it's a renewal. The documents that were put in your packet, unfortunately, were not. Were from the initial contract, and we have contracted directly with Salesforce instead of the state authority that we used to initially get the contract. I just wanted the public to be aware so that nobody found it to be surprising. But we have updated those, and they are now in the packet.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Kate. Appreciate it. All right, see you everyone tomorrow at 5:00.